Since we have a zero quorum, there is no reason to take a quorum count. It looks as if we have people in the hall, so I will call the meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to read the posting of the warrant.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the high school auditorium, 7 Viking Drive, Wareham, Mass. on Monday, October 28th, 2019, to act on following articles, number of them are 24.
I will waive the reading of the articles. Have a second? Okay. From Allen. The posting of the warrant has been legally posted. I will now ask the junior ROTC for the posting of the colors, and ask everyone in the auditorium, please stand for the salute to the flag.
Left hand, go. Carries colors. Right face. Forward, march. Mark time, march. Colors up. Left face. Present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic by which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the National Anthem.
Oh, say can you see, by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please remain standing. I would ask for a moment of silence, and I would like to recognize those people who have given time and their energy to the town of Wareham who have passed recently. Anton Buddy Andrade. Buddy was a Wareham police officer for two years, and was awarded a certificate of appreciation when he was recognized for exemplary service to the community and to the town of Wareham. He was also a police officer, I believe, on Sandwich as well. Barry Sullivan. Barry was also a police officer for the town of Wareham, and also Sandwich, and retired from the Wareham Police Department in 1991. Michael Byrd. Michael Byrd was employed by the town of Wareham Police Department as a dispatcher, where his voice was easily recognized. He was also a retired call captain of the Wareham Fire Department for 35 years. Ray DeCosta. Ray was a former foreman for the Onset Water Department, and also a call firefighter for over 19 years with the Onset Fire Department. Joe Leggett. Joe volunteered his skills to repair area playgrounds and to keep our beaches clean. He served on the Open Space Committee, the Conservation Committee, and the Community Preservation Committee of Wareham. And Margaret Hitchcock. Mrs. Hitchcock was a second-grade teacher at the West Wareham Elementary School for 33 years before retiring in 1981. I would ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. You may have a seat.
Right face. Forward, march. Mark time, march. Colors up. Right face. Order, arms. Colors post. Carries colors. Left face. Forward, march.
I would like to recognize and thank the Wareham High School JROTC for opening our ceremonies tonight. Also want to recognize that we have Boy Scouts here tonight from Troop 39, and also some students from the Wareham High School Government Class. I just want to share with you that hopefully sometime in November, I will be meeting with Mr. Stanton, who teaches government, and we will be walking those students through their own town meeting. So it's something that I think they will enjoy, hopefully. Certainly will give them a taste of what's to come when they become 18, in our voting age. So I would like to introduce those of us onstage. For new people who have never been, I'm Claire Smith, Town Moderator. Our Town Clerk, Michelle Bissonette. Town Council, Rich Bowen. Our Town Administrator, Derek Sullivan. Our Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Patrick Trappiano. Mary Mackey. Peter Kitebaum. Alan Slaven. Jimmy Neese. Our Deputy Moderator, Joe Ashley. And then our Finance Committee. I keep my distance glasses, I apologize, but if I put them on, I can't read in front of me. So we have David Hurd. Bernie Pidgen. Joseph Smith. We have Pat Brumney. We have Stuart Nowick. Jerry Stefanski. Who's next to you, Jerry, if you can lean forward? Dominic Coppola, and... Tom... Tom... Tom Worthing. Sorry. I have to make a choice. Either I can read what's in front of me, or not see further away. Just some rules and regulations that govern the meeting. The duties of the moderator and the procedures of town meeting, which aren't specifically laid out by town law, are determined by the rules contained in the 75th edition of Robert's Rules of Order, town meeting time, town meeting tradition, and those rules set forth by the moderator, which under state law, I have the authority to regulate this town meeting. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 15, whenever a two-thirds vote is required by statute, the moderator could declare a vote without a count, so long as six people don't stand and doubt the count. But I don't think we're going to have that issue tonight with our electronic voting. So the warrant was duly posted in every precinct, and it was posted on the town website, and that is our agenda for the evening. I will ask for a motion on every article, and you should listen carefully to the Finance Committee when they make their motion, since the vote and the debate is on the motion. It doesn't necessarily be word-for-word what might be in your warrant, so just pay attention to what's on the screen. That's what we'll be debating and voting on. After the motion is made and seconded, debate will be open. I will ask the Board of Selectmen for their vote. I will then ask for the vote of the Finance Committee, and ask for their recommendation. And then the proponent of the article will speak to the article. If you wish to stand and comment on the warrant articles, please approach either one of the two microphones on either side of the aisle. I ask that no more than two people stand at the microphone at any time, and that's so that we don't block the aisles and leave them wide open, just in case. Please state your name, and your marks must be limited to what's being discussed on the floor, so please keep that in mind, that if you're going to stand to talk, talk to what is before us. Please direct all your comments through the moderator. Do not engage with anyone else. Ask your questions through me, and if you need an answer, we will try to get it for you. It has been tradition of this body that we allow five minutes for the proponent to make their case on an article. This has been a longstanding tradition. I am going to ask this body, and this is just a voice vote, if you would like to keep that tradition, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, it's unanimous. We will... Everyone else will only get two minutes to speak. I will not cut you off in mid-sentence, but we will give you fair warning, that your time is running out, and that's so that we can move the meeting along. If you do need more time, certainly you can ask for it, it will be up to the body as to whether they want to allow it. Amendments. Amendments can be made to any of the articles being debated. To offer an amendment, you need to give the text written to me, and that's so that we can present it to the town clerk, because it has to be a matter of record. So we do need your amendment in motion, your amendment as motion in writing. And then I will recognize whoever made the amendment. Now reconsideration. It has long been a tradition, going back to as many years as I've attended town meeting, and I'm not going to tell you how many that is, because you'd really figure out how old I am. Reconsideration, if approved by a simple majority, will enable us to go back to something that has come before us for further consideration. In order for reconsideration, it must be moved on the same night as town meeting, not a different night. It must be made by a member who voted on the prevailing side, and it must be seconded, and it is debatable. Now, I'm only going to allow reconsideration if there has been a hasty, ill-advised, or an erroneous action, or if there's additional information that was not available to us when the vote was taken. So non-voters, you're welcome to attend, but I want you to, please, if you're out there, make sure you come down here and sit to my left. Please turn off your cellphones. No photos are allowed, except for the press, and they have asked permission beforehand. This is a deliberative body, it's not an open meeting. We had some issues many years ago, so we did have to come up with a policy, so turn your phones off, there's no photos to be taken. Except, and this is the one and only time, I'm going to allow our town council, if he wishes to, maybe take some photos during the meeting. Our town council is leaving tomorrow for South Korea. He is leaving to represent the Mass Moderators Association to talk about small-town government. So he had asked if perhaps he could take a couple of photos, that he could put into his PowerPoint presentation, and I have granted that, because I think it's very important. He is certainly going to represent the whole state and our community as well, and, you know, if this is helpful to make things go smoothly, and show other countries what democracy is about, then you certainly have my permission. I wish I were going with him, trust me. I really would have liked to have gone and had the opportunity, but...
I'm coming back.
He is coming back. He assures me he will come back. But this is a great opportunity that the Mass Moderators have. I believe there's two other countries that will be represented, Sweden and Japan? Sweden and Switzerland. So we wish you well, have a safe flight. So under Article 2, Section 6 of the Town Charter, every department needs to attend the sessions of town meetings, so that they can be here to answer any questions that make them up. I'm going to call a roll call the department has. Human Resource Director. Board of Health. Chief Assessing Officer. Natural Resources. Council on Aging. Information Technology. EMS. Town Accountant. Finance Director. Inspection Services. Municipal Maintenance. Planning. Police Department. Water Pollution Control. Library. Thank you. Tonight, we're going to give a shot to electronic voting. So you all have your lanyards. Pretty simple. What we're going to do is, when the motion is up on the screen, you will see the actual motion before you. We will debate it, we will discuss it. When there has been enough discussion and debate, then I will call for a vote. And when I say, "I now will call for a vote," and please wait till I get done with the vote, don't do it in the middle of what I say, but when I call for the vote, please, on your lanyards, press either 1 for yes, or no, or 2 for no. So again, it's 1 for yes, or 2 for no. Now, people say, "Well, why are there so many buttons?" Well, the reason for that is, these are used in colleges, in business, and so they need all the buttons. But for our purposes tonight, you only need number 1 for yes, or number 2 for no. And once I feel that I think that most everyone has voted, I will give you a 10-second warning, that you'll only have 10 seconds left, and you can change your vote right up until that clock, which will come up on the screen, goes down to 0. And once it goes down to 0, all voting is in, it's counted, and you should immediately be able to see up on the screen what the actual vote is. So I would like to say thank you to Greg Alexander, who's here tonight, from Ohio, from Information Technologies, who has offered to be here and let us try this tonight. I would like your feedback. Please let us know how you like it going forward, if this is something that you would like to continue with. So having said that, I'm going to give you a test run. So up on the screen... We have a motion before you. So the motion before you is, will the Patriots win the Super Bowl? So I am now going to call for your vote. Please vote 1 for yes, or 2 for no. You have 10 seconds left. So the motion carries. So that's, you know, so you can see how it will go. We're going to do one more, just so that you're comfortable. So the motion before you is, defacing a milkcotton in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is punishable by a $20 fine. I will now call for the vote. All those in favor, please say yes. Press number 1, or press number 2 for no. You have 10 seconds left. Pretty interesting. The actual answer is, defacing a milkcotton is actually punishable by a $10 fine. So are you all comfortable now that we can go forward with town meeting? Okay, we're going to move on. What we generally try to do in town meeting is put together a consent agenda. Traditionally, over the years, we have articles that repeatedly come up, time after time, they don't generate any questions, they're in the warrant every year, or they're articles that perhaps we're going to pass over or further study, things that we can do in one vote, get them out of the way, rather than taking them up individually, it will save a lot of time. So get your warrant out. I'm going to take it slowly, and I'm going to tell you what articles I would like to see in the consent agenda. Now, if you have any issue with it, just tell me that you want it taken out of the consent agenda, and we will put it back into the rotation of the articles, and just so that you're aware, we do do our articles by lottery. So I'll give you a few minutes, I'll try to go slowly. In the consent agenda will be Article 6. And Article 6 is a peg access receipt to Wareham Community Television. This is a housekeeping article that we take up every year, that allows funds received from the cable companies to be allotted to WCTV as agreed through a contract between WCTV and the town of Wareham. They come into the general fund, and then they're transferred over to WCTV. Article 9. Article 9 is the transfer of McKinney-Vento funds to the Transportation Revolving Fund. This fund is a reimbursement for the transportation of homeless students to and from where their temporary housing is outside of the district. This is a direct reimbursement from the state, and then it needs to go to the Transportation Revolving account. So the amount that's going to be reimbursed from the state is $23,464. And again, this comes up every year. Article 12 is the Onset Pier Debt Payment. This is the second debt payment for borrowing that was authorized at a prior town meeting for the dock system at the Onset Pier. So as you all know, we do have to pay our bills, and so every year, we have to have this in our warrant article until that is paid. Article 16. Article 16 is the Tremontale Cleanup Debt Payment. Again, this is another debt payment for money that was borrowed, and this is to pay the interest due on the bond that was approved at the fall 2018 town meeting for the cleanup of Tremontale. Article 21. Article 21 authorizes the borrowing of $350,000. This article rescinds Article 16 of the October 2nd, 2017 Special Town Meeting, which authorized the borrowing of $200,000. And this will now authorize the borrowing of $350,000. This money is used to provide loans to repair failing septic systems, and the town recently learned that it can apply for a higher amount. So again, this is an article that repeatedly comes back, it's just that, when we first voted it, we didn't realize that we actually could borrow more money, so we're just changing the amount. Then we're going to pass over Article 5, which is unpaid bills, and there are no unpaid bills, so we'll put that into the consent agenda. Article 10. Article 10 has been withdrawn based on feedback from the Finance Committee, that they prefer articles to be closed out to free cash. Article 10 was a request from the School Committee for certain things, of projects that they had done and had leftover money, but that money needs to go back to free cash, and the article didn't signify that, so we need to just do it over again at a later date, put the money into free cash, and then take it out. So there's really no action on it tonight. And then we're going to further study. The petitioner had a petitioned article to ban plastic bags and use recyclable bags. After meeting with different boards and getting some feedback, she realizes that she would like to have this article further studied and brought forward at the spring town meeting. This will allow time for the recycling committee, the selectmen, and the petitioner to develop a more comprehensive plan for town bylaw. So we now have before you the consent agenda. Bernie, do you want to have someone make it, or you want me to just read it? I'll read it, okay.
I move that the town approve Article 6, Article 9, by transferring $23,464, Article 12, Article 16, Article 21, and further pass over Article 5, Article 10, and that Article 24 be further studied and brought forward at the spring town meeting.
I have a motion, and I have a second. This article is going to require a two-thirds vote, and that's because one of the items on the consent agenda involves borrowing. So I'm now going to call for the vote on the consent agenda. Please vote now. Press 1 for yes, 2 for no. You now have 10 seconds. Overwhelmingly, a two-thirds vote. The vote is 169 to 6. Madam Clerk. Article 1.
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Just a minute. Mr. Ashley, would you please come forward? I am going to recuse myself from Article 1, the feasibility study. I don't have ethically any reason why I have to, but I want to be open and honest to you, that 25 years ago, I served on the Police Station Feasibility Study as its chairman. 15 years ago, I served again as chairman of the Feasibility Study Committee. I obviously have a very vested interest in this. I also have a lot of information based on those two studies that I feel I can share with this new committee, and so for that reason, I don't want anyone to have any feelings that, you know, I have an interest in this. Ooh, how did that go? So I'm going to step aside, only for those reasons. Like I say, I just personally feel that I have a very vested interest, and I don't want people to assume that, you know, because of that, I'm acting on something that I shouldn't be. So I'm going to step aside and let our deputy moderator take this.
Good evening. Can I have a motion on Article 1, please?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer $165,000 from the Municipal Facility Stabilization Fund for the feasibility study of a new public safety building, preliminary design, and appraisal of the value of the current facility, and that the Board of Selectmen appoint a Public Safety Complex Study Committee.
I heard a motion in a second. Do we have anyone to speak to the article?
Thank you. If you move to Page 1 of the Administration Handout, this article seeks to fund a feasibility study with preliminary design work and appraisal of the current police station property. The requested $165,000 for this article comes from the Municipal Facility Stabilization Fund, or MF SF. The MF SF was created in the spring and is supported by depositing 25% of all cannabis revenue the town receives. Since the December 2018 opening of Veralife in Wareham, the town has received $722,488.38. There have been $661,560.39 in payments made after we established this fund, so the 25% of that was eligible to go into the fund. If this article passed, there would be $390 left in the fund until the next deposit from the cannabis revenue. And if anybody's ever gone to the police station, they just had an open house, if you've been a guest, that's probably another matter, too, but it's something that's desperately needed, and is not, it's frankly not the conditions that the men and women of Wareham Police Department should be working in. So thank you very much.
Can I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen, please?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action.
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, five zero zero.
And the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The recommendation to Finance Committee's approval by a vote of eight zero zero.
Floor is open to debate. I don't see anyone standing, so we will now call for a vote on Article One. Oh, were you standing to speak to the article, sir?
Beg your pardon, sir?
Before the article, I would just like to know if the town administrator could explain the Verallife funds a little better, it's a little confusing. I don't quite understand the 25% of which number, if you would, please.
To answer the question?
Yeah, we receive 25% of all cannabis revenue that comes to the town is put into that fund, so it would be 25% of the $661,000 in change. And the reason it's not the full 722 is that amount, we received some funds before we established this Municipal Facility Stabilization Fund, so you can't retroactively put monies you've received into there. It's only the monies we received after that fund was established.
So, you're saying 25% of the 661 has gone into the feasibility, into the MF SF?
Yeah, correct.
Do you have that number by any chance, or do you want me to? I can do the math. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. To speak to the article?
Yes, I'd like to speak on behalf of the Finance Committee. We had the opportunity to tour that facility, and it was our opinion that the staff that works out of that building does an extraordinary job when you consider the dilapidated condition that they're trying to work under. The number of issues that they have in that building and they still accomplish, the work that they do, is extraordinary. It is, it was 50 years old, some age like that, and it's totally inadequate for the job that they're trying to accomplish. They have a numerous number of calls that have been growing considerably, and all I can say is we are grateful for the job that they do under those circumstances, and I think they deserve a better facility considering how difficult their position is right now. Thank you.
Seeing, to speak to the article?
I would just like, I would just like to add to that, that policing has changed a lot in the last 10, 15, 20 years, and not only for the safety of our offices, but the safety of the people they may have taken into custody, that this building was absolutely deplorable. I mean, these guys are doing a great job under adverse conditions, and I would ask everybody, go down and take a tour, if they have another open house, walk around, you'd be in shock to see some of the things these guys are working on, they're doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Seeing no one standing, I will now call for a vote on Article One. Because it involves the transfer of money, it requires a two-third vote. It's to transfer $165,000 from the Municipal Facility Stabilization Fund for a feasibility study for a new public safety building preliminary design, and the appraisal of the value of the current facility, that the Board of, and that the Board of Selectmen appoint a Public Safety Complex Study Committee. All in favor, would you please press one on your devices? All opposed, press two. The motion carries by a two-third counted vote.
Your honor. Article Four. Before we go to Article Four, I never gave the Board of Selectmen an opportunity. Did you want to address the body?
We're already underway.
Okay, okay. I was so anxious to get going with this electronic voting, I'm sorry, I apologize. All right. Article Four is before us. May I have a motion, please? Transfer of free cash. $450,000 from Certified Free Cash to fund the following. A, a stabilization fund, $150,000. B, Plymouth County OPEB Trust Fund, $300,000. Have a second? Have a motion and a second. And the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
My turn?
Yeah, vote and recommendation of the Selectmen while she's waiting, go ahead.
Selectmen voted five zero zero. Favorable action.
Vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
They can't help it, they put it in the one. Madam Moderator, time of the printing, we had not voted, not have been able to make a vote.
Okay. Is there anything to be said on Article Four? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. Please use your devices to vote either yes or no. Did you want to speak to the article? Yeah, need to go to the microphone, please? Please, please state your name.
Forrest.
Your question?
Olga Forrest.
And your question?
What does OPEB stand for?
Other Post-Employment Benefits. So, it would be what you pay retire, what you pay for health insurance costs and such of, after people have retired from the job.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote. Please use your devices to vote either yes or no, one for yes, two for no. Requires a majority vote. You'll now have 10 seconds left. The vote is 151 in favor, 23 opposed. Article Eight. Ladies and gentlemen, one of the things that I also forgot to mention was on the way out, we need to get these devices returned. So, you'll see that there'll be a place where you can hang your lanyard, please, on your way out, hang it, that's to prevent them from getting all tangled, because we do need to ship them back. Article Eight, may I have a motion, please?
Article Eight, Solar Pilot Agreement. I move that the town vote to approve a payment in lieu of taxes, pilot, as negotiated between town of Wareham and the developer of the project, Cranberry Highway Solar LLC, for a commercial solar array with an anticipated capacity of three to four, plus or minus, megawatts, under development at 2382 Cranberry Highway, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator to take such actions as necessary, as may be necessary, under state law to effectuate said agreement. A copy of the pilot to be placed on file in the office of the town clerk.
Have a second? Have a motion and a second to, may I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted five zero zero to recommend.
Have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval of this Article Eight zero zero.
And to speak to the article?
Yes. Per the pilot payment, per the agreement, the pilot payment shall be the sum of $14,000 per megawatt, with an expected nameplate capacity of approximately 3.1 megawatt. This will result in a total of $43,400 going to the town for the first year. Each subsequent year, the fee will increase by 2.5% from the previous year's payment. Solar installations, where the electricity is used by the homeowner, are generally not subject to local personal property taxation. Accepting this article will allow the town to enter into an agreement that guarantees payments to the town. This solar pilot is similar to the one that was most recently approved by town meeting vote in the spring of this current year, 2019, and this will only, the only, this will be the only electrifying article tonight. Thank you.
To speak to the article?
I think the Finance Committee said it all, thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article Eight? Gentlemen on my right?
Madam Moderator, Urban Russell. Yes, so where is this located at?
To answer the question?
2382.
Can you go to the microphone, please?
Well, it's on 2382 Cranberry Highway, so I think, are you just looking for maybe a neighboring reference or something like that? Okay.
General location. General location, it's located near the Great Hill Mobile Home Park, just before Charlotte Furnace Road comes up in between a couple of industrial buildings in the back. It backs up to Route 495.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Eight? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for your vote. Please use your devices and press one for yes, or two for no. You now will have 10 seconds left. This requires majority vote. Vote is 164 in the affirmative, and 10 in the negative. The motion carries. Okay, it's in the consent agenda. Our clerk? Number six. That's in the, you didn't pull those?
Seven.
Okay. Article Seven, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve and fund collective bargaining agreements between the town of Wareham and A, Massachusetts Laborers Public Employees Council Unions, 1249 of the Laborers International Union of North America, Wareham Clerical Union; B, Massachusetts Laborers Public Employees Council Union, 1249, at the Laborers International Union of North America, Wareham Waste Water Treatment Plant Union; C, Massachusetts Laborers Public Employees Council Union, 1249, of the Laborers International Union of North America, Wareham Municipal Maintenance; Department of and Town Custodians Union; D, United Steelworkers, AFFL, CIO, CLC, Local Union 13507, Unit Seven, Lower Managers Union; E, United Steelworkers, AFL, CIO, CLC, Local Union 13507, Unit Eight, Upper Managers Union; F, Wareham Professional Firefighters, EMT Association, IAFF, Local 2895; and G, Wareham Police Union, MCOP, Local 423; and H, Wareham Sergeants, NEPBA, Local 181.
I have a motion, I have a second. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted five zero zero to recommend.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Yes, Madam Moderator, the vote of recommendation of the Finance Committee is approval by eight zero zero.
To speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This represents eight of the 12 unions on the town side. The four that are not in here of them, one is the lieutenant's contract, which does not expire for another year, and the other three, we were unable to come to an agreement and believe that will come in the spring.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Seven? Seeing no one. Gentlemen on my left?
Hi, my name is Tim Patrica. I don't have a problem with the article, but can you give me a money figure?
To answer the question?
Let's see, it's approximately $24,000 for the custodians, $22,000 for steel workers, Unit B, $27,000 for unit steel workers, the steel workers, Unit Eight, $21,500 for the labors of the wastewater treatment plant.
Actually, you don't have to give me each individual one, if you can just give me a grand total.
I'm sorry, I was, I have them listed out in the format, I was just going over. The clerical unit I have is 18,000. Library, we did not do. And then, the police union, one moment. Is going to be $23,063 in year one, and then $57,000 in year two, and $59,000 in year three.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article Seven? Seeing no one standing, I will now call your, call for a vote. Please use your devices, press one for yes, two for no. This requires a majority vote. You now will have 10 seconds. 156 in the affirmative, 22 in the negative. The motion carries.
Article Thirteen. I move that the town vote to transfer, A, $13,381.88 to the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve Fund account from the Agwam Unit Number 51, Fall 2014 Town Meeting, Article Number 25. B, $22,825.64 to the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund account from, B1, Father Bill's Fall 2016 Town Meeting, Article 15, $3,862.44. B2, Onset Boat Ramp Spring 2015 Town Meeting, Article Number 15, $2,507.20, and, B3, Historic District Map Spring 2011 Town Meeting, Article Number 35, $16,456. C, $34,415.80 Auditorium Roof Fall 2017 Town Meeting, Article Number 25, to the Historical Preservation Reserve. Reserve Fund.
Have a second? I have a motion and a second before us. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted five zero zero to recommend.
I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval eight zero zero.
So anything further to be said on Article thirteen? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for your vote. Please use your devices, press one for yes, two for no. You now will have ten seconds left. This requires only a majority vote. A hundred and sixty-eight in the affirmative, ten in the negative. The motion passes. Article twenty. I have a motion, please.
Article twenty. Update zoning bylaw with already approved overlay district. I move that the town vote to amend the Wareham zoning bylaw at Article two, zoning districts, section two-one-two overlay districts, by adding the following language. Two-one-two point five Tremont Nail Factory redevelopment overlay district. The Tremont Nail Factory overlay district is intended to encourage a cultural mixed-use center with historic buildings and a distinctive and attractive site development program.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted five zero zero to recommend.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted to recommend this and refer it to Town Meeting, eight zero zero. And by referring to Town Meeting, because it did not directly affect the town budget, we felt that this was appropriate for the Town Meeting to make their own decision on this. However, the consensus was that this was a positive movement for the town, and many of us are going to vote in favor of it.
To speak to the article, Article twenty. Oh, that's right, this requires a report from the Planning Board.
Yes, good evening, George Barrett, Chair of the Planning Board. On October seventh, two thousand nineteen, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article, and we voted unanimously to recommend further study, five zero zero. This is a housekeeping measure that basically inserts the newly-created Tremont Nail Overlay District into the zoning bylaw with the list of other overlay districts.
Mr. Barrett, would you be sure that you get your report to the town clerk so that it can be included in the town report?
Sure.
Thank you. To speak to Article twenty? Mr. Tettobon?
Yes, last fall, this body passed the Tremont Nail Overlay District. That was incorporated into the zoning bylaw. However, the one thing that was omitted in that article was to add the name of the zoning overlay district into our list of overlay districts. So it's just a technicality that was overlooked last fall.
Thank you. So anything further to be said on Article twenty? Seeing no one standing, because this is a zoning article, this does require a two-thirds vote. Seeing no one else standing, I will now call for a vote on Article twenty, on the motion before you. Please use your devices, press one for yes, and two for no. You will now have ten seconds left. The vote is one hundred and sixty-nine in favor, twelve opposed, it does pass by a two-thirds vote. Article two.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the legislature
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone, please?
Excuse me. I'll start from the beginning. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the legislature for special legislation to provide for a full municipal contribution of the cost of municipal insurance provided to the widow of Officer Christopher Argentinus, a Wareham police officer killed in the line of duty in nineteen ninety-nine.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, may I have the vote and recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted five zero zero to recommend.
May I have vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The vote of the Finance Committee was approval eight zero zero.
Thank you. To speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. If you came through, you'll see there was a handout with, with deceased patrolman Christopher Argentinus's photo and the information about the accident that took his life while on duty and the, an explanation. So probably what people would want to understand is the financial obligation to the town. Currently, the widow is on a single plan, which costs just a little bit under four thousand dollars that she pays, so the town's obligation on the, to pick up the other fifty percent would be roughly four thousand dollars until she is medex eligible, and then it would come down to about seventeen hundred dollars. It's something that was, it's the twentieth anniversary and was brought to our attention, and what we're seeking is the special legislation to correct something that should have been handled years ago. So we, we ask for your, your authority to take this action. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article two? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for your vote. Please use your devices, press one for yes, two for no. This only requires a majority vote. You now will have ten seconds left. The vote is one hundred and sixty-eight in favor, and seven opposed. The motion carries. Article eleven. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of forty-six thousand from the Harbor Services Permits Receipts Reserved for Appropriations account to the Harbor Masters Maintenance and Improvements.
May I have a second? I have a motion and a second. May I have a vote and recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted five zero zero to recommend.
May I have vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommended eight zero.
To speak to the article?
Thank you. After the action we've already taken of transferring sixty thousand from the Harbor Services Receipts Reserved for Appropriation account, there is currently a hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents in that account. So if this action were to take place, you would have a balance of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents in the account. And the items that they're looking for is to repair, replace, and maintenance to equipments such as markers, moorings, docks, pier, and public access areas, vehicle lease payment, and harbor report system management, safer, boater safety education, literature, and supplies, and harbor service permit and printing and mailing. And these are all eligible activities to be expended from this fund. So thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article eleven? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for your vote, please use your devices, press one for yes, two for no, and this requires a majority vote. You now will have ten seconds. Motion carries, one hundred and seventy in the affirmative, eight in the negative, the article passes. Article seventeen.
I move that the town vote to amend zoning bylaw, Article three, to amend section three forty point six as follows. Amend Article three forty point six by adding towing for service to the definition of motor vehicle service. Motor vehicle service establishments engaged in providing structural or mechanical motor vehicle, including automobile or boat repair, washing, towing for service, or service.
Do I have a second? Thank you. May I have the vote and recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted five zero zero to recommend.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted eight zero zero to refer to Town Meeting.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article seventeen? On my left?
George Barrett, Chair of the Planning Board. On August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, the Planning Board moved to recommend that Article seventeen is printed in the warrant by vote of five zero zero. Board found that the amendment clarifies a common activity found in motor vehicle service establishments and distinguishes it from a towing and storage facility. This addresses a problem of a definition raised in a recent zoning application. The Board in the future will discuss adding a definition for a towing and storage facility if needed.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article seventeen? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for your vote. Please use your devices, press one for yes, two for no. This requires a two-thirds vote because it is a zoning article. We have ten seconds left. We have ninety-seven percent in favor, three percent opposed, it passes by a two-thirds majority. Article number three.
Article number three. I move that the town approve from fiscal year twenty, from the fiscal year twenty capital plan by transferring one million two hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars from free cash for the following items. Item A is for the school department, and it's for building HVAC, that's heating, ventilating, ventilating and air conditioning, repairs, upgrades, grounds, and furniture. The amount, the cost is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming from free cash. Item B is the school department for technology, textbooks, licenses, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash. Item C, from the school department, purchase and equip one bus and two vans, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from free cash. Item D, police, purchase and equip three police vehicles, two quad ATVs, and radio infrastructure, for a sum of two hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars coming from free cash. Item E, municipal maintenance, a skid steer with attachments, ninety-two thousand, funding sources free cash. Item F, municipal maintenance, library and town HVAC, I believe this is a study, fifty thousand dollars free cash. Item G, that's our IT department, virtual server replacement, for three hundred and eighty thousand dollars from free cash, for a total of one million two hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Do I have a second? I have a second, I have a motion and a second. May I have the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted five zero zero to recommend.
I have the vote of the Finance Committee and recommendation?
Yes. Finance Committee took a vote this evening, eight zero zero, in favor of it. Finance Committee has looked at the town's list of capital projects and confirms there are multiple needs for the town. However, Wareham typically uses free cash to fund its capital projects, and at the time of warrant being issued, free cash had not been certified. It was only certified last Friday. This is the result of a careful analysis of the amount of money that was available and a prioritization of the capital projects that the town needs. We urge you to vote for this.
Thank you. To speak to Article three, please.
Thank you. The information for Article three is in the administration handout, and this article seeks to purchase capital items from what is known as free cash. The town's policy for free cash expenditures is to use it for one-time costs, such as capital items, funding the stabilization fund, and OPEB trust funds. These policies have helped the town increase its S and P global bond rating to AA plus, one step below AAA rated, and the highest rating in the town's history. So we certified free cash at three million four thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars. We've already transferred four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out in a previous article, and we will seek, this article seeks a total of one million two hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars, which will leave a balance of one million two hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. And you've already gone over the breakdown of all the items. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article three? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for your vote. Please use your devices, press one for yes, two for no. This requires majority vote. You'll now have ten seconds. The vote is one hundred and seventy-four in the affirmative, eight in the negative, the motion carries. Article twenty-two.
Article twenty-two, establish a stormwater management and illicit discharge bylaw. I move that the town vote to establish a stormwater management and illicit discharge bylaw. The bylaw shall be created as Article two of Division Five rules and regulations relating to the use of public and private sewers and drains, et cetera, as in the Finance Committee report.
Do I have a second? I have a second, I have a motion and a second. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Selectmen voted five zero zero to recommend.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommended eight zero zero. Finance Committee approved this article, and if you look in your paperwork on Appendix Five, there's an explanation of it, it's a- It's quite lengthy. You can read it for yourself, but basically, it's mandated by the federal government to implement these regulations.
To speak to Article 22?
Thank you. Federal regulations require the town to adopt a program for cleaning up stormwater runoff, discharging into our coastal waters. This bylaw establishes the rules for locating polluting sources, mixing with stormwater, and dumping into the town system. It also organizes the town departments for drafting and maintaining a stormwater pollution prevention plan. We recently had the fun experience of having an EPA audit on our stormwater regulations and how we are maintaining our stormwater, and this is one of the big things they hit us over the head with, is not having this regulation. So, we were able to get this in time for town meeting. Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said about Article 22? Gentleman on my, I'm sorry.
Charlene Mackowitz.
Lady on my right. Sorry, it's dark.
That's okay. Charlene Mackowitz, hi. Is there a money figure that accompanies this, like expected costs regarding this?
To answer the question?
No, there's not an established one. This is something that we're going to have to do no matter what. It's a, it's a man. Costs, we know just by the EPA regs outside of this, there's certain things we have to do that are the costs, such as going through our catch basins every two years. The initial cost of that could be upwards of $200,000 to $300,000, but it's not this that's doing that. It's the actual EPA regs and other items.
So, when we get to the point of having to pay for some, what type of money does that come out of, the free money, or is there other?
We're going to have to do twofold. We're going to have to start using our actual budget money, so you'll see increases to the municipal maintenance budget, and if there's capital items such as repairing large systems and such, we will either use free cash or have to borrow for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 22? On my left.
It's me again.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Tim Patrica. Is there fines for anybody that actually, that you come across that actually pollutes the water?
To answer the question?
We already have fines in our regulations. I'll just, Ken, can you?
To answer the question only, please.
Yeah, on the noncriminal disposition section, yeah.
The only fine, Ken Buckland, Town Planner. The only fines would be those adopted by regulation of the Board of Health.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what he said.
This, this does not establish it. What he's saying is the Board of Health has the ability to establish those fines. It lists, if you look at the page 10, under Section C, you'll need, see noncriminal disposition. It says, "As an alternative to criminal prosecution or civil action, the town may elect to utilize the noncriminal disposition procedure set forth in Mass. Journal Law, Chapter 40, Section 21D, and in which case the health director or municipal maintenance director shall be the enforcing person. The penalty for the first and all subsequent violations shall be $300. Each day or part thereof that such violation occurs or continues shall constitute a separate offense."
You answered my question. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 22? On Article 22, as is before you, to establish a stormwater management and illicit discharge by law, this requires a majority vote. I now will call for your vote. Please press one for yes. The vote is 175 in the affirmative and six in the negative. Motion carries. 19, 19. May I have a motion on Article 19, please?
Yes. I move that the town vote to amend zoning bylaw Article 3 to add a new Section 399. Amend Article 3 and add to marijuana facilities a new subsection 399. Because state program development for cannabis businesses is ongoing and state regulations have not been finalized, a one-year moratorium on issuance of any permits for social consumption marijuana establishments shall be enforced from the date of town, of town meeting vote.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. May I have the vote recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted 5-0-0 to recommend.
I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee voted 8-0-0 to recommend, to refer this to town meeting.
To speak to the article? Planning?
Hi, George Barrett, Chair of the Planning Board. On August 26, 2019, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article and recommended by vote of 5-0-0 as printed in the warrant. Board recommends waiting for the state to advance the program before considering regulations at a local level, and by this preemptive action will, might get ahead of the curve if they come out with any funny regulations. We recommend favorable action, as I said.
Thank you. To speak to the article? George, are you speaking on this one? Are you speaking on this article?
Madam Moderator. This article is just to hold on all applications until the, such time as the state has adopted their regulations, and we have time to consider them and decide whether or not we want to have these types of facilities in the town.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? On my left.
Tim Patrica, is this one year cobbed in stone? In other words, say in two months, the state comes up with regulations, do we, I don't smoke, by the way. Do we still wait for the year?
To answer the question?
It stays in place for the year. It doesn't change. Nothing will change until it expires, and then we bring something forward.
Okay, so.
We could rescind it at the next town meeting in April if we had to, so.
Okay. You answered my question.
Thank you. Anything further to be said? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote on Article 19 to amend the zoning by law on Article 3, as is before you on the screen. Please use your devices. Press one for yes, two for no. This is a zoning by law. It does require a two-thirds vote. You now have 10 seconds left. Vote is 83% in favor, 17% against. The motion carries.
I move that the vote, that the town vote to appropriate from Community Preservation Undesignated Fund or any other monies available in the Community Preservation Act Fund under the category of open space recreation, a grant to the Wareham Youth Soccer Club, $40,000 to fund the creation of five soccer fields and supporting infrastructure on existing town-owned Westfield property at 98 Charlotte Furnace Road.
Do I have a second? I have a second. I have a motion and a second. May I have the vote recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted 5-0-0 to recommend.
I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommended approval 8-0-0.
Thank you. To speak to the article?
The Wareham Youth Soccer Club, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, has obtained an agreement with the town of Wareham to use and improve the Westfield Recreation Facility at 98 Charlotte Furnace Road. The project is to create five youth soccer fields in the empty field next to the existing softball fields. Currently, there are over 300 players, ages four through 18, that participate in the soccer club. The estimated cost of the project is $70,000. Wareham Youth Soccer Club is requesting $40,000 in community preservation funds, and the club will be responsible for all maintenance on the site. And one of the things, if you're wondering what the town is charging for this to utilize the site, that is nothing. One of the thoughts is that when the town got rid of its recreation department years and years ago, a lot of the 501(c)(3)'s and the nonprofits have stepped up to fill that void. So, the youth soccer club is one of them and doing a fantastic job to help the children of this community.
Thank you. To speak to the article, gentleman on my left.
Yeah, David Fredericksen. Just a quick, maybe you just answered this, Derek. Once these fields are built, where's the money to maintain them?
They will maintain them, the club.
Including water and all, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, there's, there's water out there for watering the fields right now. The softball association pays for the water that they're using, so the soccer association or soccer club would do the same. Electricity is the same thing, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
On my right?
April Rossi. Sorry, I'm too short for this. Having previously lived in the neighborhood that is directly behind and abutting the location, is part of this funds for parking infrastructure as well, or is that going to be maintained and done by the same fund?
They will be expanding the soccer, I mean, excuse me, the parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for your vote. This requires majority vote. Please use your devices. Press one for yes, two for no. You have 10 seconds left. The vote is 167 in the affirmative, 12 in the negative. The motion carries. Can I make a request that somehow we get some funding in the budget somewhere for some lighting? I, I don't believe there's bulbs, Peter, is what I was told earlier, but I really think it would be beneficial that if we, this is something we should look for for the spring.
Yeah, I see a spring town meeting capital article coming forward for lighting.
May I have a motion, please? Article 18. I move that the town vote to amend zoning by law Article 10 to amend Table 1042, minimum landscape buffer as printed in the warrant. Thank you. Do I have a second? May I have the vote recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted 5-0-0 to recommend.
I have the vote recommendation of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee voted 8-0-0.
To speak to the article? Planning Report, please.
Hi, George Barrett, Chair of the Planning Board. October 26, 2019, Planning Board moved to recommend Article 18 as printed in the warrant, 5-0-0. The amendment makes the landscape buffer table consistent between uses and makes it more consistent with the building setback. And that's, that's the difference between the two. It doesn't affect setback from the property lines, just the amount of buffer between two uses that were contradictory.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 18? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for the vote on Article 18 to amend the zoning by law for the landscaping buffer. This does require a two-thirds vote. Please use your devices to vote one for yes or two for no. It does require a two-thirds vote. You'll now have 10 seconds left. 89% in the affirmative, 11% in the negative. It passes by a two-thirds vote.
Article, Article 14. I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund or any other monies available in the Community Preservation Act Fund under the category of open space recreation, a grant to the town of Wareham for $220,000 to fund the rehabilitation of the existing town-owned Shangri-La Playground with access point on 10 Peaceful Lane.
Do I have a second? I have a second. I have a motion and a second. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted 5-0-0 to recommend.
The vote recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted 6-1-0.
Thank you. To speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Inside your, your Finance Committee booklet, you have an explanation that, that goes through a lot of it, from the open space plan, the location that, from access point from 10 Peaceful Lane. But one of the things is if you've been to Shangri-La, you've seen what that playground has become. You know that there's, there's a need to do something. Some residents stepped up and really started looking into what they can do, putting together a plan, and have worked hard with the Community Preservation Committee to put forward a plan to rebuild the playground in that location, and it's one of those, you know, one of those community builds. It's, it's not, obviously, they're seeking town funding through CPC, which is a completely correct usage, but there's also a lot of volunteer work and a lot of hours, so. Carol, if you're out there, thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 14? You need to stand. I can't see you unless you stand, but I have this gentleman. I'll recognize him, and then I'll come to you. On my left?
Hi, Tim Patrica. It's been a long time since I've lived in that area, but is that the playground that's in a gully?
To answer the question?
Are you going to fill it in? Because that's going to flood forever.
No, the part of this is addressing the drainage issues. We're not filling it in, but there's different drainage pipes that lead in there, and part of this is engineering costs to address those drainage and fix it. That's still the best available site for that area, and we know how many kids are around there, so.
Because when I lived there, there was a lot of kids, but it was always full of water.
Yeah, and that's what, part of it's addressing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm in favor for this playground because it is desperately needed up there. It looks like it's in a bomb crater. However, some of the things I personally would have liked to have seen was a design plan of to how this is going to be forthcoming. I know they're going to put drainage in, I know they're putting parking in and the different games and things, but I feel, in fairness to the body, for information, there should be a design along with this. Also, I was disappointed that there wasn't a more forthcoming budget. Two hundred and twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money, as is twenty thousand dollars, when it's taxpayers' money, is a lot. I think a budget should have been presented with this. Out of the sixteen different items, only half of them have a money item next to them. The rest to be determined. And I'm not disputing the need of the playground, they are putting drainage in. It is needed, but I personally find this unacceptable, but I do not want to, I do want to see the kids or adults with a playground up there. Thank you.
Thank you. On my right?
My name's Happy Snodgrass. I actually have two questions, one raised just now. Who would be overseeing the disbursement of these funds?
To answer the question?
Thank you. It's a two-pronged process. The bills are given to the Community Preservation Committee to vote on, then they come to the town hall and they are then expended out of the, it would go through the accounting office to be expended.
Excellent. My second and last question, is there the potential for the town to incur any liability should this not be funded?
I guess, I don't, sorry, I don't understand.
Is there the potential for the town to incur any liability, for example, a dangerous space, should this preservation not take place?
Municipal maintenance has already removed the more of the dangerous equipment, if you will, that was there. You can sue a ham sandwich if you want to, so...
Oh, I'm acutely aware of that. I just want to know that if this doesn't go forward, is... So, what you're saying then is municipal maintenance is already maintaining a baseline of safety, if you will, for the site?
No, at the request, we had removed some dangerous equipment. I don't think there's really, there's not too much maintenance going on. So, in the future, that would be changed. And we're hoping to limit this to one of our major playgrounds in the area so that we don't have thirteen, or I mean, twenty-one, I think, spread out across the town, but we have a bunch of key ones that we can spend the time and maintenance on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article fourteen? To appropriate money from the Community Preservation Fund for the Shangri-La Playground. Seeing no one else standing, I will now call for your vote. Please use your devices and press one for yes or two for no. This requires a majority vote. You'll now have ten seconds left. Hundred and forty-three in the affirmative, thirty-four in the negative. Please hold your applause, please hold your applause. The motion carries. Hundred and forty-three to thirty-four. Article twenty-three. This is our last article.
They save the best for last.
May I have a motion, please?
Article twenty-three. The WPCF funding request for process improvements. I move that the town vote to appropriate one million from the Capital Reserve and further borrow one million six hundred and fifty thousand to pay for the cost of constructing a new lined weather equalization basin for the cost of the engineering to other process improvements for new denitrification filters and raw wastewater basin lined and covered at the water pollution facility, as well as the payment of all costs initial and related to, thereto, any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of the insurance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment and cost approved by this vote in accordance to MGLC forty-four twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such cost by a like amount.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. I have the vote and recommendation of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, so, this is an interesting one because the Board of Selectmen didn't actually take a physical vote on this. And the reason for that was is that it was originally came to us at ten million dollars, and then it was cut down and we didn't take the vote on it yet, so... Although I can tell you personally, I would recommend it. Everybody here can tell you what they think.
I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommended eight zero zero. The Finance Committee concurs that the money is needed for the future of the town and its growth. The Finance Committee feels that the options of borrowing should take place. And this is just one of the critical issues and must be addressed at our water pollution control facility, which was built in the nineteen seventies and renovated in the late nineteen nineties. The Finance Committee recently toured the WPCF and are concerned with the number of conditions that are needed to be addressed. This facility is critical to Wareham's survival and to its future. Thank you.
Thank you. To speak to the article? Do you want to speak or do you want a guy to speak? We actually have a presentation by the engineers.
Oh, the engineers here, okay.
Yes, okay. Yep. Gentleman on my right? Please introduce yourself. We have an engineer that will explain what this is. I'm sorry, I thought you were on my left, I apologize. That will explain what this is all about.
Good evening. My name is Russ Kleecamp. I'm an engineer with the company GHD, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the water pollution control facility. Next slide. So, for those of you that don't know, this is an aerial view of where all the sewage in the Town of Wareham goes under normal operating conditions, all of the flow. All of the flow enters this, the Headworks Building, and then it travels through a series of tanks and filters before it is discharged to the Agawam River. The plant itself can treat about two million gallons a day. Next slide, please. So, what the issue is, is when the plant receives more than two million gallons a day, the equalization basins, those two large black basins, fill up with the extra wastewater. Recently, over the past few years, the treatment facility has been seeing more than two thousand, much more than two thousand million gallons a day. And when that happens, the flow goes into the equalization basins, but they were only designed to do that for a short period of time. We've seen longer and longer durations of what we call INI flows, which is inflow and infiltration. A good portion of that being from sump pumps. When we have extended rain events, the groundwater table rises, which gets water into the basements of homes and businesses. It also gets in through the sewer pipes, through cracks in the sewer pipes, also manhole covers, things like that. So, what happens is these basins keep filling and filling and filling, and to avoid a discharge, a raw wastewater discharge to the Agawam River, the water pollution control facility is forced to discharge wastewater on an unlined area of the treatment plant grounds. So, why this is a concern is that it violates their existing discharge. It's basically an illegal discharge. If that happens repeatedly, the Department of Environmental Protection can issue mandates for the town and for the Water Pollution Control Facility to fix that. So, we know we need to do this, and the longer that we wait, it will only cost more and more for a project like this. But along with the discharge, there's also concerns of the longer this raw wastewater sits in these basins, it compounds the odor issue, reduces the treatment capabilities of the Water Pollution Control Facility, and it also really hinders the operation. Next slide. So, these are just a few of the images. This one here shows the unlined area where the wastewater is being discharged when we have these high-flow events. There's another picture here. Next slide. So, what we're proposing is to add an additional, these are the existing two lined basins. So, when these fill up, they have to discharge into this area, which is a depression. So, right now, we're proposing to develop another lined equalization basin in this area. Next slide, please. Another image here, another one of the concerns is that, so when they do pump, as they're doing right now into this area in the wetter months, which would be February, March, April, once it dries up, it leaves behind dried sludge, which can also add to the odor problem, and it's a nuisance cost for the Water Pollution Control Facility to have to clean that up at some point. Next slide. This is a picture of the raw wastewater that enters these equalization lagoons. So, you can see that it forms these solids on top. It's not only unsightly, there's also an odor associated with this. So, the better we can manage this situation will tremendously help with the odor concerns. This will be the last slide. So, what I'll go through is, these are really the seven main points why we're doing this project now, is the number one is that it's an illegal discharge. The town is in violation of the discharge permit. They do not have a groundwater discharge permit. They have a surface water, which means it's discharging to the Agawam River. The untreated effluent that's being discharged into that unlined area is also depositing much higher amounts of nitrogen, which is a nutrient. It creates a bunch of issues when it gets into the river. So, there's a significant environmental concern. We have the issue of the accumulation of the dried sludge that forms up in the off-peak months. That can lead to an increase in odors, and it's a nuisance, also has a cost associated for the cleanup of it. The undersized equalization basins retain the raw sewer longer, which compounds the odor issue. One of the items I didn't talk about too much was the last step of the process, all the treated wastewater goes through what they call a denitrification filter. It's the last step. Treatment plants nowadays are designed with what they call redundant filters, so if one of the filters goes down, they can still maintain their treatment. The existing treatment facility does not have a redundant filter. So, that's one of the items that we want to look into. So, right now, every time these filters get clogged with these much higher flows, the treatment plant has to take them offline, and it creates a significant operational issue for the treatment. Number six, the existing equalization basins, they're not really well-suited for solids management. We showed the picture of all the funky stuff growing up on top of the lagoons. Well, when that drains down, there's a series of aeration pipes that are in there. They're not covered, which most of the larger treatment facilities do have covered lagoons to help manage odors. So, we would look into a better design to help manage the solids. And lastly, the existing equalization basins, they just, they have an inadequate capacity. The flows we're seeing today are much higher than they were originally designed for. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Before we go any further, I just want to remind this body that the last vote after this that we're going to take is for a motion to adjourn, so don't get up and run out. I want you to take that vote with your device. So, just so you know, after this one, I will accept a motion from someone for adjournment, and you can take your vote on that. Also, Mr. Sullivan, because of your kindness and letting us use this trial voting method, has provided a treat for you tonight, so on your way out, help yourself to a piece of candy. Gentlemen on my right?
Madam Moderator, following the vote...
Just a minute? On my right?
Yes, Madam Moderator, Ervin Russell. I would like the privilege of a personal privilege motion after following the vote.
I'm sorry, what was that?
At the conclusion of this vote, I would like to have a personal privilege.
What's your, what are you asking for a personal privilege for?
Well, we're in the middle of a vote, so I wouldn't...
No, we haven't, no, we're not voting yet, so...
Well, it's not to do with this motion.
Okay, then, after we're done with this, then you can rise and ask for your personal privilege.
Very good.
Gentleman on my left?
Jeff Burrows. I have a, I'm just curious, have you taken into account the potential impact of a casino when you're designing all this new processing and all that? Or are they going to have their own treatment plant? I'm just curi, my concern is, you go through and you implement this whole structure, and then you get whacked with a casino. And what happens with that water? Thank you.
To answer the question?
The plant has whatever capacity it has due to its outflow, not the inflow. So, I think some hypothetical, I don't know, Russ, is there?
To answer the question only?
Yes, so the discharge permit for the plant is one point five six million gallons, so there is a remaining capacity. Like any new development, I would assume that the casino would have to approach the WPCF and have a discussion about what the flows they're creating are and how that will impact the system.
Thank you. Gentleman on my right?
Howard Smith, Precinct Four. I noticed on the screen it did say, it referred to the odors. Now, is there some type of guarantee that this is going to work to take care of these odors? We've been listening to a lot of proposals from that plant for many, many years, and it doesn't seem to be doing anything at all down there. We spent half a million dollars for a Greasezilla that's not working at all. So, I'm concerned. You know, for this kind of money, we need something that's going to give us a little bit of benefit to the neighborhood. We just can't keep spending money in there. The second thing is basically, and now I notice you were pumping water into that area now, so while you're going to be working into that low spot, where is that water going to be discharged in the meantime? I mean, you can't pump water into a hole and work in at the same time.
To answer the question only?
So, with regards to the first question regarding the odors, it is a raw, it's a wastewater treatment plant, and it would be very difficult to say that it will be a hundred percent reduction of all odors. It's just there's no technology available that can do that at any treatment plant. But we will say it will reduce the odors. For example, the two things we're proposing, one is to look at covering the lagoons, which is what the major, much larger treatment facilities, I believe New Bedford, the larger ones, all have covered tanks and things of that nature to help limit the odors out there. They can look at the installation of different type of filters within those charcoal filters that will help treat the odors. So, they will never be eliminated a hundred percent from the treatment plant, but we feel very strongly, absolutely, that they will be reduced.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, just that I go by a lot of sewer plants over the years and out of town, some of the biggest ones around, and you get no odor at all from there. So, now, my second question was what about the water that you're going to be discharging?
So, the discharges, they typically occur in the springtime when we have the high groundwater and the excessive INI flows coming in. There are periodic times throughout the year where I believe the treatment plant has to discharge that area. But they do have a very large ground, so there are several other depressions or areas that if we needed to, we could look at pumping during construction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman on my left?
Yes, Bill Tatlow. Is, what's the capacity of our system? Is it up to full capacity?
To answer the question?
So, the treatment plant was designed to treat two million gallons a day. The permit is actually for one point five six million gallons. And I believe as of right now, the treatment plant, on average, for an average annual flow is receiving roughly one point one, one point two million gallons a day?
The reason I ask that, we just had a development down at Bay Point, which is going to be adding to the system. Down in Buzzers Bay, they got a brand-new hotel that'll be coming into online pretty soon. They have another aging home going into Buzzers Bay that's going to be coming to Wareham. Where does this stop for our expenditures?
Do you have a specific question, Mr. Tatlow?
Yeah, is, what's happening is, I don't know if you've been down through the Agawam River at night or the Wareham River, is the odor coming down there, it's like raw sewage is being dropped off late at night when the tide is going out. I don't know if that's a fact. I'm asking the question in front of everybody. So, if someone can answer that, I'd be glad to hear it.
To answer the question?
Well, I'm familiar with it. We've been trying to deal with the odor issues down there since two thousand and eight, and we haven't been very successful to this point. But now that we've brought some individuals on board that have some experience with this, we feel confident that as we move forward with these changes, and there'll be others along the way that are going to have to be done, that we can start to reduce the amount of odor and it'll, like they say, it never gets to a hundred percent, but hopefully, we can get close.
I understand that. You go over by the Narrows, when that water comes on... You go over by the Narrows, when that water comes underneath that bridge at the Narrows, it's black.
Yeah, it's not from the, that's not from the sewer plant.
You go down to Long Beach, there's no more grass out there like we used to have for scallopin'.
That's not from the sewer plant.
You have three seconds, Mr. Tatlow.
Okay, that's all right.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article twenty-three? Seeing no, Mr. Worthing?
The sewage treatment is a very valuable asset for this town, and you've just got to be thinking tonight, thirty miles to the east of here, is a town that's voting and spending thirty billion dollars over the next thirty years to create a sewage treatment plant. So we really owe thanks to those people who were here in the nineteen sixties who voted to establish the plant that we now have, and it's our responsibility and good judgment that this plant should be maintained at a very high level.
Is there anything further to be said? Seeing no one standing, I will now call for your vote on Article twenty-three. This is a borrowing article, so it does require a two-thirds vote. Please use your devices, press one for yes, two for no. You have ten seconds left. Hundred and forty-five in the affirmative, nineteen in the negative, the article passes. Now, we had a gentleman that wanted to ask for a...
Madam Moderator, Ervin Russell. I rise for a personal privilege. Point of inquiry as to who was responsible for preparing this finance booklet and photos and materials on, on this?
The Finance Committee puts together the financial warrant that's handed out at town meeting.
And who was responsible for doing the artwork and?
They all worked together.
The setup?
The whole committee works together on this.
But do we have a, a company that produced these pictures and, and the cards?
If I may, Madam Moderator?
To answer the question?
The resource we have for all those photos that you've seen in the past few years is the Wareham Historical Society.
Well, Madam Moderator, I would like to ask this body to join me in a loud round of accommodation for a job well done. I, I really appreciate the photographs and the program that was put together here, and...
Thank you.
I, I truly believe this will be a very proud item for
Thank you.
the town council to take along with him to his trip, and hopefully he'll have a safe one. And I'd also like to offer the accommodations for the experiment with the electronic voting. I think it was a very big success, and I accommodate the town administrator or town moderator for bringing it forward to us.
That's all the moderators, don't give me any credit. That was all clear, so.
Yes, town moderator.
Thank you. I just want to get a sense of the meeting, is this something, and I want to take a voice vote on this, is something going forward that you would be interested in continuing?
Yes.
Thank you, appreciate that. So now I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I will now call for your vote. Please use your devices, press one for yes, two for no.